Welcome everyone to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you will remain standing for the invocation, we have Pastor Steve Holdaway from Life Spring Church here. They're at 13904 South 36th Street.
Let's pray together. Our gracious heavenly Father, it's good to bow before you just take a moment to say we appreciate you. You're the one who instituted human government. And so we believe that you have influence, you have wisdom, and you have that which we need. So we beseech you tonight. Lord, before I intercede for these public servants of which I'm so grateful, God, I want to take a moment and just say thank you to you. You've brought us through some very trying trouble, divisive times, times of sickness, times of death, times of confusion, Lord, but yet you've remained steadfast and true. We thank you that through it all, God, the truth of your word stands, the truth of your commandments and your best advice for us stands. Lord, may we learn to speak the truth, but speak it in love and build bridges and not barricades, Lord. May our speeches as we debate and talk and interact be seasoned with grace. And Lord, now we do pray for all these public officials. Lord, we pray for your wisdom on the mayor and this city council, for all these public servants here, for our police officers, for our firefighters, for all the first responders. Would you put your hand of protection on them? And we boldly pray, will you bless our city much? Father, thank you for your grace in our lives. And now, God, I pray that for the business at hand, those issues that will be discussed tonight, that you will give wisdom and decision making. And God, I gratefully pray all of this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Holdaway. Okay, I'll now call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Stinson.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion by Stinson, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Preister, is yours coming through? Do you just want to verbally give me your vote? Yes, okay, thank you. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. There are no special presentations this evening under item seven. We did not receive any citizen communications this week. That's item nine. Item 10, liquor licenses, we have none. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, ordinance number 4040. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4040, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 36th Street and Lexington Avenue, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 4040.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11A1, request to mall subdivision plat lot 1, 370 square replat 6, being a replat of lots 1 and 2, 370 square replat 4. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B, ordinance number 4041, to make unlawful and set a penalty for those charged with violation of city ordinance, been issued a citation and who failed to appear or refused to appear in court, and give the city attorney and avenue to obtain a warrant for defendants who continuously or repeatedly fail to refuse to appear in court. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4041, an ordinance to amend Article I, Chapter 20 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section 20-15 regarding failure to appear and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilman Stinson.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 4041.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11C, ordinance number 4042, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to bicycles. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4042, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7 pertaining to bicycles by amending Article I, Section 7-2, and repealing Article I, Section 7-1, and Section 7-11, and Article 2 in its entirety, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 4042.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. 12A is ordinance number 4044. Applicant is Svenson Real Estate LLC, general location 3501 Harrison Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4044, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 3501 Harrison Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to approve an effective date.
Thank you. I will open up for public hearing, and if the applicant is here, I'd like to start with them. Please state your name and address and sign in.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Sullivan. I represent the applicant. Jeff Stoll is also here with E&amp;A Consulting. I think as part of this, I want to make it on the record that this is a very simple application that I'm bringing to you, and I don't imagine too much controversy. The family's parents have recently passed away. This was kind of a family compound. Several of the lots are owned by family or in the family's LLC. The difficulty is, is we used to have pyramid zoning where you could have a less intense use and a more intense use area. Our code has since changed, making those houses non-conforming uses. So the main change that's being done here is to put those houses back into a residential zoning. So if they had damages or other things beyond 50%, the insurance would cover it and bring it back into compliance. The other difficulty would be there is one of the grandchildren that wants to buy the house, but because of the zoning that exists now, they can't get long-term financing. So simply to try to clean up the property, and the only properties that are affected by maintaining the ongoing commercial zoning are the owners, the surrounding owners that are also making the application to change to residential. I'll answer any questions, and if it gets into any engineering issues, Jeff's here to answer those for you as well.
Any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Yep, Councilman Preister.
Pat, it looks pretty straightforward to me. It's just providing some conformance, because there's some, there's a garage there, and there are residents, and then there's even one rental house on the property. So it does look pretty straightforward. It's just coming into some conformance, so for the loan, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. It's a well-maintained property. I like the park-like setting. The family has maintained it. It almost looks, I have likened it to a compound, too. The family setting, its own driveway coming in to the individual driveways, and it fits well in the neighborhood. So this makes sense to me, too.
Okay, any other questions at this time? All right, public hearing is open. Is there anyone here in the public wishing to speak regarding ordinance number 4044? For or against? Please come forward if there is. Anybody wanting to speak regarding ordinance number 4044, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Also going to read 12A1, request to preliminary plat lots 1 through 5, Svenson Acres replat 1. 12A2, request to final plat lots 1 through 5, Svenson Acres replat 1. 12A3, waiver of Section 6-4 subdivision regulations regarding street design standards. And that third reading and vote will be August 3rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM for those items. 12B, ordinance number 4045, general location, South 25th Street and Cornhusker Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number 4045, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about South 25th Street and Cornhusker Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Okay, also going to read 12B1, request to preliminary plat lot 1, Redwood 25, and 12B2, request to final plat lot 1, Redwood 25, and I will open up the hearing for all those items on ordinance number 4045. Is there anyone here to speak regarding? For or against? Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in.
I'm already signed in. My name's Paul DeCryf. I'm with Redwood. 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road in Independence, Ohio. We have a quick presentation.
Okay.
Again, Paul DeCryf with Redwood. Joining me this evening is John Coolidge with Lamp Reiner, our local civil engineer. On behalf of John's firm and my firm, I'd like to thank staff for all their help. It's been truly a pleasure, and we're excited to be here. I'd also like to thank you for your time and consideration tonight and future consideration. But before I talk to you about our proposal, because this is our first time in front of Bellevue, I thought I'd take a moment to describe our company, why we do what we do, what we do, and really the only way that I know how, and that's to talk to you about us in the core value number five, which is to communicate openly and honestly. You can see all eight of our core values on the right-hand side of this presentation. Those core values are not just words to me and my colleagues, but they are a roadmap to success. We at Redwood have been doing one thing very well and very successfully, and that's core value number one, which is build two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, single-story attached townhome neighborhoods. We've been doing that since founded in 1991 by Steve Kimmelman, who had a few simple goals. One of them was to create unique, stressless, remarkable apartment homes. And then Steve's second real goal was to control all parts of the process in the company, from site development acquisitions to long-term management. To date, we have over 13,000 units, and we've never sold one. That's in part because we're not just simply building another Redwood neighborhood, but we're building a company. And as of today, you can see our footprint, we're out east in the Carolinas and making our way west here to Omaha. All of what we do, though, doesn't happen by accident. It's, there's over 400 professionals in the townhome rental business that work at Redwood, including one manager, one maintenance professional at each unit, often who live there, who provide service every day. We use a little bit about our criteria for our residents. We use credit and criminal background checks to make sure that our neighborhoods are managed the best way possible. What does that mean? It means Redwood applicant screening criteria is more robust and allows us more control than most HOAs and single-family subdivisions. Who are our residents? Empty nesters, young professionals, residents who want a single-story design, those who desire a neighborhood feel with built-in peace and quiet, those who no longer want to worry about home maintenance, landscaping, and snow removal. And again, it's that unique design and features that generate long-term residence. How do we know who our residents are? We use our 13,000-unit portfolio to evaluate future sites. And within our portfolio today, our average age is about 51 years old. 70% are empty nesters, most relocate from a three-mile radius. So they're already neighbors, your neighbors, they're already here. There's about 1.65 individuals within each apartment home, 1.5 cars, 11 school-aged children per 100 homes, and 12% of our residents stay for more than five years. And then nearly 3.5% of the original residents in 10-year or older neighborhoods still call Redwood home. Here's some images of our exteriors. You can note, there's a lot of images in the packet submitted by staff, but we wanted to show you some actual images, because we're not practicing here. We've built these units over and over and over again. Some of the features includes that, again, that single-story apartment neighborhood, zero-grade entrances, personal patios, two-car garages, everything, all surfaces outside are concrete, so patio, sidewalks, driveways, and streets, stone and shake accent, extensive landscaping, construction and management ADA and GSE compliant. That means our senior residents and/or empty nesters really like the units that they're getting. We provide consistent maintenance, so no matter if you're looking at a unit that's 12 months old or 12 years old, the only difference you're going to really see is the size of trees, front and rear loaded garage units. On the lower left-hand image, that's our rear or our forward-facing garage unit. In those images on the right-hand side, the first one, you'll see in the middle, next to the Redwood sign, that is our rear-loaded garage product. So there's more of a porch in the front. Here's some images of our interiors. Again, they're not renderings, they're actual live images. One I want to point out is on the right-hand side, that picture, as you look at it, it's nice, it's decorated, there's nice pillows, there's nice lamps and that. I want you to pay attention to the window, though, and not necessarily the window, but the view you get out of the window. It's like no other for-rent, traditional for-rent apartment product. And each unit really has an open concept floor plan, granite countertops, private entryways, full-volume ceilings, luxury vinyl plank flooring, high-end finished appliance fixtures and paint, accent paint, walk-in closet, walk-in pantry. I don't know where you get that anywhere else. Full-size washer and dryer hookups, a bonus room den, and also Energy Star certified construction. These are our floor plans. Our smallest floor plan is just under 1,300 square feet, and our largest floor plan is just over 1,600 square feet. That Haydenwood unit, that's our rear-loaded garage unit. That's really the only difference there. So here's our site. It is an existing undeveloped site nestled between commercial business and single-family residential. In the city of Bellevue's master plan, the property is planned for residential use with a max density of 15 units per acre or nearly 400 units in total. This is really just a summation of some facts and figures that are in your packet, but we meet most of the setback requirements. One thing I just wanted to point out again is our density is at 4.85, which is below that 15.5. And then our starting rents, everybody always wants to know that. We anticipate that our rents will start out for that smallest unit of 13, just under 1,300 square feet, at around $1,700, and that's before any premiums, so view premiums, and then utilities as well as pet rent. The rent, as an add-on to that, I just want to say most of our residents pay the equivalent of what would be $250,000 to $350,000 house payment. Here's the site, 25th is located along the left side of the site, and it is south of Cornhusker at the top. The site was restricted in part due to power lines at the north end, as well as a gas line running down the middle. Our main entrance is on South 25th on the left-hand side, with a secondary connection at Jamestown or as it flows, South Hogan Town. Again, our drive aisles have posted speed limits of 25 miles an hour. We don't allow parking on there. If you do, we tow you, like many of the rules that we use to manage the property. They're all privately built and privately maintained. We fix them and shovel them ourselves. This is just really an image of the schematic that's in your packet for landscaping, and the only thing I wanted to point out here is that our landscaping plan includes 124 trees and 252 shrubs. You can see the majority of those are at the south end of the property, creating a buffer to the neighborhood to the south. Maintenance, this is just a guideline, some stats about how well we maintain our properties on the exterior. The one thing here I just wanted to point out is our forever tree program. So we buy trees from a vendor that provides that warranty. So if a tree ever dies, no matter when it happens, they come out and replace it. This is a cross-section of the southeastern portion of the site. What I wanted to draw to your attention was the proximity to some of the neighbors in Willow Springs, in particular lots 143 and 147. You can see that we are just over 60 feet away from that, our building is 60 feet away from that property line. I also wanted to point out, you can see along that first retaining wall between the Willow Springs neighbors and our neighborhood. On the right-hand side, it's about 10 feet and goes slightly down, and then there's another terraced wall behind that near our building, and that's roughly, give or take, about five feet. So the drop between the two subdivisions creates, the new subdivision will create quite a bit of privacy between our neighborhood and the existing homeowners there. What I wanted to do was talk super fast about our parking analysis or our traffic analysis. This is an analysis done in 2010 that Redwood commissioned. It's an array of different unit-sized communities from just over, under 100 to just over 150. What I wanted to point out is the weekly AM peak hour traffic counts and the weekly PM traffic count for those. You can, and what I want you to do is now look at a similar traffic study done in 2019. You can see that there's a lot of consistency there, which is what you're going to find with Redwood. All what we do is very consistent. Here's some images, before I conclude, of our interiors. You'll see transom windows above the sliding glass door, pendant lighting, again, island kitchen, lots of details you don't see in the average apartment building. Double bowl vanity, walk-in shower, boat, shower curtain rod, walk-in closet. Storage areas available for our residents. A lot of times, we have residents who are moving out of homes and they're looking for storage. And then last but not least, this is just some imagery of some of the exteriors. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you again.
Paul, just a quick question. Does Redwood ever sell any of their areas?
We do not. We have never sold a single one. We have 13,000 units and have never sold one. When I say that Redwood is different, it goes all the way through from our investors all the way to our residents.
Okay, and then your minimum lease term is?
Twelve months. Twelve months.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Great presentation, because as you were talking, I'm writing questions, and then the questions are getting answered during the presentation. You've never built in the Omaha area, is that correct?
We have not.
Okay, why did you select Bellevue?
Because, again, we look at our demographics in our portfolio, and we try to pinpoint neighborhoods or locations that match that, so that we have a really high degree of certainty of what we're going to deliver and what we're promising and what we're going to deliver.
Awesome. Do you have an onsite manager?
We do.
That lives there? Okay.
We not only have an onsite manager, but we also have an onsite maintenance manager. So there's two people per neighborhood, and they most often live there.
Okay. And then I saw something about streets maintained two inches of snow. Is that, is that, you guys maintain the streets? The city?
No, we do.
So we don't have to do any street maintenance in this subdivision?
No.
Okay.
It looks and feels more like a home. Residents bring their garbage cans out from their garage, and they wheel it out and collect garbage. No putting the garbage on your car or your trunk and driving it down to a dumpster.
Okay. And then are any of these handicapped access?
Everything is. The way it's designed, we have zero-grade thresholds entrance to the units. We use lever door handles on the interiors. Our curb is a rolled curb, so it's ADA compliant from any unit to another unit. That's what somewhat drives, you know, our typical resident base.
Yep, being in real estate, I know that there's always a high demand for handicap access property. So based on what you said, it looks like a good product.
Thank you. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. You did answer a lot of my questions, but you said on 15 acres that our zoning would allow 400 units to be built here.
It's the current, the current comp plan allows a max density of 15.5 for that site.
Okay.
Or four hundred units.
And your, your project is a hundred-and-thirty-one units?
Yes, sir.
Did you, um, is there any, I know there's a lot of green space around here, a lot of, like, in between what I'd call the east versus the west. Is that gonna be maintained? What I'm looking at is if people wanna walk, is there gonna be any walking? Maybe be able to walk around this project or, uh, for dogs or for kids to throw a ball. And I, now, the numbers you were giving me, it sounds like there's not a lot of kids
No.
in these things, but is, is, is there any of that around here?
There is. All of that open space is maintained by us. It's on the site.
Okay. And there's no clubhouse, there's no weight room, workout room?
Most, most, most of our residents are coming from within the neighborhood, so they already have a coffee shop, a, a, a fitness center. We don't wanna take that business away from local business owners.
And they're all single-story?
Yes, sir.
And is there parking on the street?
There is no parking on the street.
Okay.
No, not, none at all. They have, there's four spaces per unit, and then we also have some, uh, uh, guest parking, you know, for when there's events or something along those lines.
Okay. You, you did answer a lot of my questions. I probably have a few questions, and I'll wait for Tammy, our planner, here. But I wanna thank you for your presentation and, uh, you've, you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
Councilman Stetson?
You talked about the retaining walls on the south side between Willow Springs and the, your building. Is there gonna be any type fence that goes down along that south side to also separate? Or you're leaving any, uh, the big trees that are along there that's going to separate your addition from Willow Springs?
Let me go to that. Let me go to that image in particular. There you go. Um, w- right now, we do not have a plan for any fence, any physical fence that separates those. Um, that retaining wall at, at the bottom right-hand corner is almost ten feet tall, the retaining wall itself. Um, and then there's another terrace retaining wall that picks up another five feet. So I, somewhere between fifteen and thirteen feet in total, John? Thereabouts. It's, uh, so on one end, it'd be about fifteen feet, on the other end, it'd be about thirteen.
Okay. How about trees? Are they leaving any trees along that?
Yes, we, there's extensive landscaping along that southern border, uh, between the two neighborhoods. Um, let me go back to that exhibit. You can see... Right in there, at that bottom, those are all plant, brand-new plantings along that southern border.
All right, thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
One more question. Have you built in a military community before?
Wow, that's a great question. Um, I, I believe so. We're i- we're in, uh, Dayton, Ohio, so there's...
Wright-Patterson, is, isn't it, that in Dayton? Okay, 'cause that, that-
It's a great question.
That, that's a lot of your transitional type of things that may or may not happen.
What's interesting is no matter the affluency of a neighborhood or how well a school district performs, our numbers seem to be held very consistent when we're allowed to do what we do best, and that's build a very consistent two-bedroom, two-bath, single-story townhome. Uh, you know, slab-on-grade so that people can go right in.
Perfect, thanks.
There's no ADA issues.
Okay, thank you. Stay close. And, uh, public hearing is open, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding ordinance number four-zero-four-five, now would be the time to come forward. For or against?
I would like to.
Okay, please come forward, state your name, and sign in.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Neal, and, uh, if you look at that map, uh, we own the two acres that are at the southwest corner. And, uh, I was just concerned, uh, what, what type of border is gonna be around this, if it's gonna be fencing? Uh, and maybe this gentleman can answer me, uh, and, and the other concern I have is this, uh, we've been there since nineteen seventy-eight. We have a walnut tree that's over a hundred years old, and it's gonna be over their border. And am I gonna, am I gonna have to do something because my walnut tree, uh, stretches over it?
Okay.
That's it.
So, uh, we'll just take that question now. If the developer wants to come back up, um...
Yes.
The, it looks like there's, you're planting a lot of trees around that property, for one thing.
Yeah, um, all of our, um, lands, all of our, our buffer is landscape buffering. I just wanna check one thing here. And... There is a retaining wall as well, um, on that. Uh, if you look on the left-hand side, you're, you're, you're at the corner there, the, the bottom left-hand corner, right? So there is a retaining wall that comes in there as well as extensive landscape to the bottom, um. Regarding your walnut tree, that's a tough one. I don't recall-
It's big at the base, and the, and the limbs are gonna be over your property.
Yeah, I don't see any reason, if it's just the limbs, to take that down.
Don't think they'd have a right to take it down
No.
since it's on your property, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And sure, come on up, state your name and address and sign in.
Um, my name's Kenny Spawn, and I'm at twenty-three, twelve Willow Circle. So I was looking at the, uh, map there, so I think I'm at the lot one forty-three. Um, the question is, you said that there are going to be trees there. Are you taking down the trees that are already there that, you know, I mean, they've been there for a long time, and it's a nice buffer between our property and the farm that's there. So I would hate to see all those trees go, even though there's gonna be a retaining wall. So i- is that, is that the plan, that you're getting rid of all the trees and then planting new ones?
Yeah, we'll ask the, um, is there any other questions you had while, while you're up?
Um, and then the other question is, the, um, entrance from Twenty-Fifth Street into the development, is it going to be, um, like a hill like it is on Hogan Town? Um, because if it is, in the wintertime, a lot of people end up going down Lewis and Clark to get out of the development because it's so, i- i- you know, it's pretty steep, so it, that's gonna create more traffic in that, into that development, so I didn't know how that was gonna work.
Okay.
Those are my an- those are my questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and if you wanna step back up? Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, to do your development properly, you're probably gonna remove the old trees and then replant grade and replant new?
We would, yes, we would have to do that. Those are on the property, and we are going up to the property line, but we are replacing trees. I know they're smaller, but they will grow. Um, regarding, um, the question about, uh, the entrance, there is grade there, uh, but again, the, our streets aren't, they're more like drive aisles to us, and they're posted twenty-five miles an hour, so someone would have to traverse up and around, right, and straight, and left, and around, which would add a little bit of time to do that, and I don't know what they, they get by doing that. Um, we're, we're not encouraging that type of cut-through traffic, um, by our design.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Please come forward.
And Mayor, while they're coming, if I may?
Yep.
The last two speakers didn't sign in. You both stated your names, but our clerk likes to be sure she spells your names correctly. So if you would sign in, please.
Tammy, I'll take that back to your seat and sign.
Uh, my name's Diana Gordon, sixteen oh-five Bridgeview Drive, Papillion. Um, a little nervous. Um, actually, my mother and uncle are the owners of this land, and, you know, they're in their upper eighties, and he's in California, so they would like to sell the land before, you know, clear their estate. Otherwise, it gets passed down to eight grandchildren in three states, and it could just sit there the way it is for who knows how long. So we are definitely in favor of what Redwood wants to do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wanting to speak? Can you guys hear me back there? Very well? Seems like speaker's not working, but... Anybody else wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four-zero-four-five? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor.
Tammy?
Can I ask you a few questions? Um, the exit on, probably, maybe should I, I should have probably even asked Paul, but the exit on going out to Twenty-Fifth Street, that's just gonna be one lane in, one lane out, will be a turn lane going out, like, two lanes to go out, where one could go right, one could go left?
Correct, it'll just be a two-lane.
It's just gonna be two, and then go, coming up northbound on Twenty-Fifth Street, will there be a, a turning lane to turn into this development?
No improvements are required at this time, no.
And is that because just the number of units here and the anticipated traffic?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, I, I know that we got an email, we got a couple of email, or an email here, connected to Jamestown. That, that's the road that, if you loop all the way down and go to the east, goes under the bridge and up to Walmart where we get some complaints. But when I look at this, I, I sort of get the feeling that if I lived maybe in the southeast corner of this development, depending on if I was going to Offutt or where I was going, I might go that way. But then I sort of think the rest of the people would probably shoot for Twenty-Fifth Street. Now, I don't know how we would prove that or say that's right, but...
So we looked at that. Um, you know, per the subdivision regulations, we don't allow dead-end streets. So, um, we require the connection to Jamestown, but the developer did get creative. You'll notice that street layout was designed to, um, make it very difficult for cut-through traffic. Um, there's no straight, north-south, east-west. You would have to wind through the entire development. As, um, the applicant pointed out, it's twenty-five miles per hour. It's, you know, a private residential street. In my opinion, I don't think you're going to have a lot of people that will want to cut through because it's not going to be advantageous to them.
And I would agree with that. I think, being in an apartment complex, to have to come up Jamestown and wiggle all the way through to get to Twenty-Fifth Street, I, I, I think that is true. I'm just worried about people leaving to say, now I'm gonna go down Jamestown.
And if they do, I believe that would be very minimal impact. Um, you know, a residential street would be designed to handle that.
Okay, and, and then there was a comment in your, in your report about, uh, um, a proposed Wolf Creek Road?
Yes.
Now, that's, that right-of-way already exists because of telephone poles.
Not the right-of-way, the easement exists. Um, a little bit of background on this, when this came in, this application came in at a time when administration and public works was trying to look at a solution to deal with the congestion of the Menards commercial area of South Twenty-first Street, Pratt Avenue. Um, so when our engineers looked at this, they said, hey, this might be our answer. Um, we could have the applicant dedicate right-of-way, and we could look at a potential future connection. So what you are seeing is the city went to the applicant and said, would you be, um, conducive to dedicating this right-of-way for us on this plat so that we could facilitate that connection in the future? And they were willing to do that for the city. Um, we're still in the very preliminary engineering stages of what that will look like. Um, because yes, there are high-voltage power lines there, so staff is working with OPPD, also working with Lamprey-Nirson, the applicant's engineer, to see what that potential street connection and that street profile would look like in the future. But that would provide a connection from Menards over at South Twenty-first all the way out to Twenty-Fifth Street. It would also connect to, um, South Twenty-third Street that goes along by DJ's dugout. Um, that's why we're not proposing any connections from the private street to the north because we want to prevent that cut-through traffic and the issues that Willow Springs currently has.
So, but, but this gentleman's company is buying all that land, and they're agreeing to set it aside or whatever?
Yes, they're agreeing to dedicate the, the right-of-way. There's no right-of-way dedicated at this time. If this approve, if this proposal is approved, if this plat's approved, it would be recorded with that right-of-way dedication on there.
And just, just a thought, going under those line, and I'm, I'm asking a question, if you don't know, just tell me, but can a road be built there without taking out poles or moving poles?
Potentially.
Okay.
Um, yes, we're, we have, we have had those discussions with OPPD. Um, for the most part, I think we're gonna be okay. There is a tricky area where the street profile doesn't look the best with the power line, so we're currently working with OPPD to see what that might entail, if that one would have to be moved, and if so, at what cost. But, um, it's, it's looking favorable that this is a project that the city will be able to facilitate in the future.
And I think it was already answered, but help me, two-car garage, who, how many cars could park in, in the driveway outside?
It's a two-car driveway.
So there's two, but could it be too deep or just single? So in other words, outside of the garage, is it just one car, then a sidewalk in the street? Or could we get two cars? I, the reason I'm asking is-
Is it four, he's in the- Four in the drive.
Four in the driveway? Okay.
Four total, two?
Four total, two in the driveway.
Okay. Because y- your report says, they only, the, the, the number of stalls they needed, you said, was two-hundred-and-sixty-two, the parking spots, and they're putting in five-hundred-and-twenty-four. So basically, each unit would have the capability of parking four cars. And then I've noticed in different spots here, they, they have-
Parking stalls.
Or there'd be parking stalls for, like, visitors.
Correct.
And that's the purpose of that.
Correct.
And, and you said the developer's gonna pay fifty percent for that right-of-way road? I'm, I'm just kidding.
I think you just gave him a heart attack.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Tammy, uh, since it is a private subdivision, basically, is it, um, will they have no, no trespassing, no, or private drive signs there?
It'll be private streets that's maintained by the developer, but that doesn't mean that it's gated or that there can't be traffic through there. Um, similar to other private streets we have in the city, it won't, it won't be a gated or it won't be anything like that. Um, if somebody wants to come through from Willow Springs, they would have that option.
And they legally have that option? So?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, uh, third reading on ordinance number four-zero-four-five, third rating, reading and the vote will be August third, two thousand and twenty-one, six P.M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, public hearing on, public hearing to obtain citizen input on the CDBG two-zero-two-one action plan with proposed funding recommendations. And I will open up the public hearing. There's anybody here to speak regarding CDBG twenty-twenty-one action plan? Anyone in the public here to speak regarding the CDBG twenty-twenty-one action plan? Pe- please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll pl- close the public hearing. Fourteen A-one, approve and authorize mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-one action plan, including resolution two-zero-two-one-dash-two-five, authorizing mayor to submit the two thousand and twenty-one action plan for the October two thousand and twenty-one through September two thousand and twenty-two program year. SF dash four-two-four, four-two-four D, and entitlement certifications. Hope I said that right. Take a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve fourteen A-one as read.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen, we have no resolutions this evening. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign in our local agreement with the city of Omaha with Bellevue's cost in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars plus a ten percent contingency of fifteen thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty cents for a total project cost amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand- for a total project cost amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents for the Harrison Street thirty-six to forty-eight street overlay project. I'll take a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen A.
Motion by Stinson, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. Stinson, is yours coming through for you? And you voted? There it is. All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the franchise agreement addendum to original agreement with Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc., doing business as Papillion Sanitation for the collection, transfer and delivery of residential solid waste recyclable materials and yard waste. Need a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
Motion by Stinson, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you. I would motion to amend by striking in Article seventeen, the two spaces where it says, starting with Anne Nebraska Land Recycling located at thirty-nine hundred D Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh seven.
That's a motion?
Just to, just to clarify the motion. Is your motion to strike Nebraska Land Recycling as an approved processor?
Yes.
Okay, so then it would just be a motion to strike the amendment in Article seventeen altogether? Is that fair?
I think so, uh, because already in the agreement.
Is first star.
There is first star, so we would just strike the whole thing.
Okay.
That would be even easier, yes.
Does the second still stand?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think before taking a vote on it, would be good to have some discussion, so there's some input.
Okay, so we have pri- uh, motion by Preister, seconded by Burns to amend by striking Article seventeen? As, as stated. Do we have any discussion?
So, in the first addendum, which is what you would be approving, there is a section that says Article seventeen, and then there's the amendment. So, the motion would be just to strike that because first star is already in the contract, so then there would not need to be an amendment. So, basically, everything under Article seventeen would be removed from the addendum.
Practical per, uh, result would be, and my only intention would be, that Nebraska Land would not be authorized. They're not currently in the contract, we don't have a contract with them, but this would authorize, as it's written, for Papillion Sanitation Waste Connections.
The First Amendment, surely.
Sorry, keep going. Keep going.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting, so, this is the First Amendment that you would be approving tonight. So, the motion is to everything in Article seventeen in the definition section would be removed because there would be no point in having that as an addendum if you do not approve Nebraska Land as an authorized processing facility. Because first star is already in the original contract.
So, where is the amendment?
That is the amendment, so, what, if you approve as shown on the screen tonight, then you would approve this language, which adds Nebraska Land as an approved processing facility. So, you would have first star and Nebraska Land as approved facilities. Mr. Preister's amendment was to remove that, which in effect only allows first star recycling to be the authorized facility.
Did I state that correctly?
Yes, you, you stated it very correctly, and that's the only thing that it would do. I think it's a great contract, I think the original one was done very well and our staff, Epiphany Ramos, did an excellent job. And, uh, I would, for the next three years, just like to give a little more time and allow some things to happen. I, I think that, I believe that Nebraska Land is a very good company, I have nothing against them. I, I think they're a younger company and they're in a residential area that just uh, doesn't really allow for any growth at that site. And I think that they are looking to expand, I think they have potential to expand. They could be taking city resources from Omaha with the contractor that Omaha has. I just see a lot of traffic, I see a lot of sound from all of these vehicles, from the semis to the skid loaders, to the trucks that bring product in, all have to go in reverse. I don't know if you've ever been around backing up vehicles that are ding, ding, dinging all the time, but the residents in the area are aware of it. And, right now, there are, there's a certain amount of traffic. But, if we add ours and then Omaha adds theirs, I just feel a personal responsibility because I know people that live in the area. I grew up on Thirty-Fifth Street, so it's not far from there. And, as I would do unto others, as I would have people do to me, I wouldn't wa- want to have somebody put that next to my house in a residential area. Even though it's zoned perfectly fine and it's allowed, but it's another city and we're not gonna hear the complaints, we're in Bellevue. The trucks, I believe, are all labeled Papillion Sanitation, so people wouldn't even know to call Bellevue as far as I can ascertain. So, we're probably not gonna hear complaints or additional complaints for some of the traffic and the additional noise sounds, as well as, uh, adding potentially more litter. And, the, the main litter would be the blowing of papers and they, they are a good company who does send their staff out to pick up the litter. But, when you get high winds as we just had and when you have litter, you never know where it's gonna go. I, I just feel personally, and I give you the opportunity to make your own decision with this amendment, that a residential area is not the most optimum, especially when it's this small and doesn't allow room for expansion on this site.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, Epiphany, can I ask you a couple of questions? I guess, question number one is, I think what's, is why is there two companies brought forward in this contract like this? You know, most of us would think that, okay, it's gonna go to site X and that's where everything's gonna go. And, so I guess if you could help clarify that, because I, I don't, really don't know where our stuff's going.
Yeah, no, let me talk about the dynamics of how the contract is structured and why the intent, um, to have specific approved facilities, we actually wrote in upfront. It did allow us to have these conversations because most contracts aren't requiring that you utilize, let's say, a subcontractor or a specific site, it's really between you and this contractor and how they manage their operations to keep, uh, you know, afloat and be competitive and also meet your requirements in contract is really their business operations. We took it a little step further when we originally drafted the contract because we recognized that processing facilities, uh, in and of themselves, um, impact so much of the environment and the community. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we did our diligence even at that level, at that, at that deep level. At the time when this contract was created, there was really one large company, um, that kind of, it still does have a pretty good hold on the market, have a, an established facility, um, and, you know, didn't have really any competitors that were, were, were competitive towards them. So, it made the most sense to have them as the approved processing facility. As time progressed, um, because, uh, just competitive markets ensue and, um, you know, recycling costs continued to go up and up, you know, we used to be in a world where recycling, uh, we, we, we were getting paid to bring that in. And now it's transitioned into, we really are kind of almost trying to pay less than what it would take to take it to the landfill and still be good stewards to the environment and of course not, um, backpedal on any of the progress that we've made with that. Uh, but, long story short, the competitive market, um, created now an avenue for another processing facility that is fully capable and has proven that they're fully capable of supporting our hauler, our, our contracted hauler and meeting their requirements within the contract. Um, so what we're, what we're wanting to do is allow our contractor to really do what they do best, manage their business model and approve another additional site for them to utilize. What could happen is due to that competition, the existing facility may decide to do things differently. Um, they may get more competitive, um, but what we do in essence is lock in that price. You know, our, our hauler said, if you allow us to manage our business model appropriately, we could keep your costs down. You know, we could make this the most cost-effective avenue for citizens of Bellevue. And as a steward to that and also to the environment and to the best use of our, our, our contractor, I said, let's take a look at this facility. We're not saying first star can't take something, we're just saying this is a new competitor in the market. Um, they've shown that they are capable of processing, they're processing Omaha commercial waste right now. They are processing citizens of Bellevue residential waste that are not inside our city limits. So, um, that's really what we were trying to do is just adding that approved processor. If we add this approved processor, our current hauler understands that, you know, they'll be able to manage their business model better and will be able to lock in lower rates for the next three years, you know? And that's, that's the intent of bringing it, so hopefully that kind of explains why there's this thing as, so far as approved sites or approved processors, um, when really it's something that our contractor manages. Hopefully that helps.
Is there someone from Nebraska Land?
There certainly is, yeah. You guys wanna come up here, you got some direct questions for them too?
You bet.
Mr. Cook, we'll have to do a motion to open it for public hearing if we're gonna have non-staff speak. You wanna just make a motion?
I would like to ask Nebraska Land some questions, so.
All right.
You have to open it up.
Couple of them. I'll make a motion, we open up for public hearing?
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to open, where we at? Sixteen B up for public hearing? Any questions? Please vote.
I'm gonna take that by a roll call, because there's not a place for me to put that motion in. Councilwoman Stinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burns?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Is there someone from Nebraska Land? Thank you for being here tonight.
Yep.
Just a couple of quick questions, how long have you been in business during this type of work? And how long have you been down at the location on D Street?
Yeah, we, uh, we've been running the recycling, um, business that we have for a little over five years now. And we've been there for four and a half and of those years.
Okay, and then, there are, there are homes very close to you. Um, I just, I don't know if you have a plan or, um, as far as complaints, what do you do maybe to prevent complaints, something proactive? I drove by your facility yesterday and went to First Star's yesterday and drove around, sat outside of your place for a while, watched a little bit of the operation going on. But, as far as proactive things in the, since there are homes close, and if you would get a complaint, tell me how you would process that or what do you already have in place or what are you already doing? How you would handle it?
Absolutely. Um, part of our current, um, housekeeping is, uh, right before their lunch break, so right around eleven o'clock, we send three to four people out there to clean the streets. And then, there's a second shift that also does that right around five o'clock. Um, so we're cleaning the streets twice, uh, twice a day. Um, some days, there's nothing out there, so it takes them two, three minutes. Some days, on windier days, it kind of blows outside the fence, we have a screened fence that we try to block as much as we can and it'll get out there, um, and so we'll, we'll clean it up. Um, we always do that on Fridays as well before the weekend, if we're not gonna work on a Saturday morning. Um, then the other thing that we did, uh, just about a year ago, is there was really only two neighbors that really ever had an issue out of the entire street and I just essentially went over there and gave them my business card and I said, anytime you see something in your yard or along your fence line or whatever, just text me and I'll get people out there, if, if we're not already out there, we'll get people out there. And that's actually taken almost all of the complaints, um, that we were hearing and they, they don't complain anymore. They just text me and we go pick it up and that's really all they care about is if it gets on their yard. And so, we just go pick up the pieces of paper that blew along their fence.
What are your hours of operation?
Uh, right now, we're bailing between six o'clock to, um, normally ten thirty at night. Two shifts.
Now, what I, what I saw was, vehicle, truck pulls in, backs up towards, I'm gonna call them a lean to building, a lean, the open, the south side of it is open.
Correct.
Looks like, uh, they're dumping right outside of that because it's not high enough to get into. And then I saw a skid loader, a bobcat or whatever you wanna call it, pretty much right there and it looked like he was pushing it into that building but off to the left. Now, my assumption is, is that somewhere it gets on some type of conveyor belt or system to be processed, which is all done inside. And then I saw semis backed up, so I imagine eventually it gets through, gets packaged, gets on a pallet or whatever, loaded on a truck and goes to another processor.
Yeah, let me give you just a quick.
Okay.
Two seconds of it, um, that is correct, it gets dumped outside underneath our awning, we push it under, we have an in-pit conveyor, um, that essentially is right on the outside of the dock. We push it up there because of the, the way our system is set up. We run it, we sort it, we run it through a bunch of machines, um, and then the final product is baled up and they're, they're just called bales, they're big two thousand pound blocks of cardboard or paper or whatever. And, um, that's the end product. And so, then we ship those off semi-fulls of, of those bales off to the end market mill, which would be a brown paper mill, white paper mill, aluminum mill, plastic mill, whatever the, the product is. And then they, they use the recycled, the recovered, uh, fiber.
Now, you say you work up two shifts up till ten thirty. How, how, are trucks still dumping and unloading it?
No, our dumps are typically between nine and two thirty and then we have some later, uh, city residential trucks that dump to us about four thirty-ish is probably the latest trucks that get to us. We're just bailing inside.
Okay.
Up until ten thirty at night.
Would, would you, would you agree that, well, I, I, I don't know, I'm, to me, the simplest way to get to your place is off Forty Second Street. Do most of the haulers, people coming and leaving, leave your business, go westbound up to Forty Second Street and then head out versus going through neighborhoods?
Yeah, we actually, um, all, all of our, all of our drivers or all of our haulers know that they, they're not, they can't use those residential, um, streets, they either gotta go up to Forty Second Street and use the interstate or go up to L Street because there's actually, there's better directional up through L, um, so they know that they can't go through there, that's, that's a DOT issue. Um, so they, if, if they get caught doing that, they're.
Even unloaded?
That's not good.
Even unloaded?
Yeah, because sometimes if, if. Yeah, because sometimes if 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 they're over six tons, it's it's an issue, so.
Okay. I have no more questions, thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, I appreciate you being here this time. And I wanna let you know, there's no reflection on your business from my comments. But I have the concerns, two questions I'll 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 ask mainly. In our packet, we got information on the tipping fee for First Star Recycling, but we really have no comparison. What is your tipping fee charge to Papillion Sanitation?
Um right now, depending on if it's commercial or residential material, um our current market rate seventy five dollars a ton. And that's just for this month, um as the market moves, as trucking out of the Midwest gets better, um if pricing goes up for some of the commodities, that's a flexible scale that could go down. So the highest we've ever been is seventy five dollars, so I can answer it that way, I guess.
Okay, it can go either way, it's depend.
I've never gone above seventy five dollars, even when the market was tank twenty five year low, a year and a half ago. We we were never above seventy five dollars.
Okay, and and primarily right now, you're doing most of the commercial recycling, some residential. But your primary focus is the businesses, commercial?
Um actually, our intake right now is about fifty fifty. We have all of the uh commercial recycling of Omaha and surrounding areas. And we have about fifty, well, half of our volume is then the the other uh different types of residentials. Uh you know, suburbs and outside city limits, we are receiving some of the Omaha uh material currently. Um and so, uh yeah, we're about fifty fifty as far as our intake.
Okay, one of the big bonuses or benefits I see to our current program is the Orange Energy Bag. And Bellevue rolled that out and we were collecting them even before Omaha, even though the papers reported Omaha was the test site.
Right.
Bellevue really did it, our our test plot for this contract. I mean, it it was picture perfect.
Yep.
I I have no complaints about anything we've done or any of our staff, they've been excellent. So at this point, are you collecting the bags? Do you have any experience with them?
Yeah.
And what do you do with them and just if you could go over your process?
Absolutely, um yeah, the Orange Energy Bags, great program. Um I'm actually working directly with Reynolds and and Hefty, um the the regional director. And it's funny you ask, they actually are uh scheduled to pick up a uh twenty twenty one bales uh from us tomorrow, and they're actually taking over to First Star. So I believe First Star will be processing it from there, but they're bailed up, Orange Energy Bags and um uh Reynolds and and Hefty. Um kind of explained to me, once they leave our facility, I don't really know the end use of them. Um but I was told they're used for um making other type of plastic products. Um different types of cement can use them when they get kiln up or something burnt up. And then there's also like a diesel type of fuel that they can create out of those, so yeah, we we process them. Um just like anybody else, we uh we pick them off the line, we set them off in a Gaylord. The box, the then the box is bailed up um in the orange bags and then we ship them off when when we have enough for about a half of a semi. Is what Hefty, is what Hefty required for us to.
You need to get the volume, but you've been doing that for the last few years then?
Uh no, we actually just started doing that about oh, probably about six to seven months ago. When uh Hefty actually contacted us and asked us what we're doing with our energy bags and we explained to them. And they said, well, we've, we got a better process, why don't we just go directly with you and you can just tell us when it's ready? And so that's kind of the direction we went, since they're the end users, so I just figured I'd give them to them.
Okay, and and I appreciate that you've improved on that part of the process.
Yeah.
For me, there's a distinction between it going into a cement kiln or into fuel for energy. Because you're combusting, you're burning, you're putting more carbon into the air. And I'd rather see it go into the end product, like plastic lumber or something that's a product. It fits better. So I I am glad to hear that you're you're sending it when it meets the guidelines to First Star Recycling. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, absolutely, that's that's where the truck is showing up and going tomorrow, according to the bill of lading. So what's what's happening at that point, I don't I don't know, I'm not on the Reynolds Hefty Energy Bag team, so I'm not.
Okay, and I'd just give you an opportunity, is there anything that uh you would like to share? Or anything that I may have said that you have a different view of?
No, um I I mean, for us, it's 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 very simple, it's the same process, we're a recycling facility. If it if it saves you guys money and saves the residents of Bellevue money, go for it, it's great. Um I don't, I mean, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Um if it does, we'd love to have the material, um but the process is exactly the same. Um we're at seventy five dollars a ton and could be less, and it saves you money, great. The way I guess I look at it.
Yeah, and and I agree, and we are being uh conscientious, I think, about the cost. And that that's another factor that I do wanna mention. In terms of the future, any plans for a larger site or getting in? I I just see you kinda hemmed in, you're restricted a bit by the the size of the location. And it's tough to put anything inside when you don't really have the space.
Yeah.
And I see you as a viable business growing in the future. And I don't know if you've started looking into that process or if it's not something you're wanting to do or what you're.
Yeah, we've we've definitely put some thought to it, um you know, our current lease is up in March, so it's a great time to start looking at at different options. Um a lot of things are coming down the pipeline, um such as, you know, City of Bellevue, City of Omaha is bidding. And it just, there's just a lot of things that are happening. And so I guess if we gain um any amount of volume that would dictate not being able to handle it at our current facility, then we would definitely want to look, cuz we wanna have a bigger, better fancy um facility, uh doesn't every company. Uh but it it has to be predicated by something. Um right now, we're, you know, we're we're running two shifts, but we're probably at thirty percent capacity of what we could do at our current location. So really, unless we got bombarded with a lot of material, um then there's really nothing for us to look at at this time. But it's definitely, definitely on the agenda to look at.
Okay, good, thank you very much for being here and for sharing that.
No problem.
I like your business, I like what it does.
So do we.
Any other questions, Councilwoman Welch?
Um just one quick question for you and then another question for Epiphany. You mentioned that your fac- is your facility just been there for five years or you guys have just owned it for five years?
Um it it was a vacant building when when we took it over. I don't know what it was there, ABC Supply Roofing Company, I believe, was in there prior to us. Um could have been vacant for a while, it looked like, uh but we were in there for five years, or we've been in there for about five years.
Okay, perfect, Epiphany, question for you, please? So if I understand this, by approving this contract, um what we're saying is, we're giving Papillion Sanitation the opportunity to use one, both, or either. I mean, it it's giving them the opportunity to decide where their recyclables are going.
Right, it's not adding another site.
It's not limiting them, it's not like um Nebraska land's gonna get everything.
It is limiting them to those two processors.
Okay, but it doesn't say that.
There's no exclusivity, no.
Okay, so it's kinda like, okay, who's got the best price or who's got the best contractor?
To them, you know, we've vetted the facility, we understand what's going on there, we do think that they're like processes. We don't see that there's huge red flags. We do have a contamination requirement within our contract that we hold our contractor accountable to and can audit, you know. So we felt like, yes, they're a smaller building and they're a newer company. But if Papillion Sanitation is trusting them with their business today and recommending them, um we didn't see any reason to blacklist them from Bellevue. And that's why we said, let's let's go ahead and add them or allow Papillion Sanitation to manage their business that way.
And let Papillion Sanitation, if if there's issues, then obviously we got a Papillion Sanitation.
Right, right, and that, when I say contamination, so like in recycling, there is a quality control that we have written into our contract that we hold our hauler accountable to. So it's not the processor's responsibility for that, even though they can come back to the hauler and say, you can't bring me this dirty load, contaminated load. We as the the city also have remedies in the contract to manage our contractor. And so everything that we do is directly with the contractor. We just had originally put another barrier because we know the impact. We knew this discussion was going to eventually happen if we talked about bringing a new processor. And that includes landfills and recycling facilities and potentially any other new type of processing that happens with our waste. And because of those impacts, we wanted these discussions to happen.
And if and if there are two of them, it creates good competition, which is good for our residents, cuz it helps to help.
We see that on the bottom line, definitely, and that's in the the master fee schedule that we presented the addition to. But it's also included in um the amendment wherein we're locking in those three years of prices at that lower rate, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Epiphany, I appreciate your coming and presenting the information. As I look at the numbers and my amendment would also impact another amendment. Because I wanna make Papillion Sanitation whole. I I wouldn't, if this does get passed, I would want to amend our master fee schedule to reflect numbers that you said. Cuz Papillion Sanitation's doing a fantastic job, I get virtually no complaints. As I said, everything about this whole process has been about picture perfect. Currently, in what we have before as sixteen B, the waste contract amendment, you list a two point five percent increase, I believe. And Papillion Sanitation was requesting a three point three. But you are very creative in your financing and you're managing to fit a little less charge to the customer to still satisfy that percentage. So what I see is fourteen dollars and ninety nine cents would be what mine would go up to from, which would be a slight increase of about forty cents, I think. Then you've got eighteen dollars and nineteen cents for the middle tier. And you've got twenty one nineteen for the top tier, the largest container. And then in an a memo that you sent answering many of our questions, in addition to that, and and this is, I wanna be clear that this is accurate, that I'm understanding it. The change to, you said, just over four percent from the two and a half percent, would put that same price at fifteen dollars and nineteen cents or an additional twenty cents. And the middle tier would be eighteen dollars and forty nine cents for an additional thirty cents. And the largest size container would be have a charge of twenty one dollars and fifty nine cents, the customers' charge, which would be forty cents additional per month. Are those numbers that you put in there, did I get those right?
Yep, so we've got the lower kind of tier at the two point five percent. If we were able to lock in these rates and to lock in those rates, we did have to approve an additional processing site. Or um we cannot approve the additional processing site. And um we would still wanna try to lock in some rates, uh you know, and they presented us with the five um I think it's five percent, close to five percent increase. Uh so then we would want to pass that on to the users, I mean, otherwise the fund would run a deficit. Even with either model, we're still running a very tight lean fund, there's not a a massive surplus or anything like that. If we don't amend the master fee schedule, errand uh amend so that there is an increase to the end user, even though we've tried to keep it as nominal as possible, um we would run a deficit in the account. And then, of course, that account deficit rolls to general fund, which affects everything from police to everything else. So that's why we've built the fund to where it's um as lean as possible, it's really as much of a pass through cost as possible. But yes, you are correct that if we don't approve the other processing site, we would in essence have to improve a higher increase. So those are linked, yes.
Okay, and I appreciate the clarification, cuz I wanted to make sure. And I would not offer the first amendment if I weren't gonna follow through with the second. Because as I say, Papillion Sanitation's doing a great job and they deserve to be compensated. The whole market fell and changed, China and uh Middle Eastern and other countries were no longer willing to take recycling. And everything just got turned upside down through probably a little fault of anybody here.
Yeah, we were able during that crisis, because of the model that we built with locking in these pricing over multiple years, the surrounding communities really came to us and said, how are you affording not to raise your rates? And I said, while we have a really good con- hauler, we have a great uh contract and we locked in our rates. So we're trying to continue to do that, um just to add this other processing site. Now, the the contract allows us to change our minds, you know. If there's something that happens um that speaks to what uh Mister Preister is is talking to, we can come back to the table and and amend this contract to essentially remove that other that other site. Of course, then the contractor has a remedy to come back to us and say, since you have changed this, we also have a right to reprice it. But um so we we definitely have some protections, I feel, inside the contract where if things did get out of hand with resident complaints or um traffic and things that are of nature of the 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 issues that I think have been brought up by multiple folks. Um we we have ability to remedy that in contract, you know. If that idea or that vision of what hasn't happened does happen. But um you know, in looking at the facility, I remember before, you know, First Star had to start somewhere too.
Right.
You know, so.
I also wanna add that the reason we do so well is because we have a great manager, and that is you.
Stop it.
And and I would agree, and I do appreciate that you're trying to have close margins and that you're shifting cost and managing this extremely well. Our finance director sings your praises when he looks at the budget, and I've heard him do that frequently.
It's not all dollars and cents, you know, this is something that I felt passionately about. Because I felt also if we stood on a ground to say, we're not gonna allow this competition on the back end of the contract, we have to raise your rates, and it's very much on the basis of how recycling is processed in Bellevue. We have over doubled our recycling rates since this new program, which is a statewide leading effort. Um our numbers are astronomical compared, we have over a ninety percent participation rate in recycling in the city. And I felt like we would lose some of those gains that we had made over the years with preaching about how this really is a best benefit to the environment if we lost some of um the argument with not being able to keep pricing and continue to be competitive on what we did with those 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 fine final end use materials, so. Um kind of another thing, it's not all economics, it really isn't, there there is a level here that we are managing um this awesome solid lease program. But we have to continue to do that, every few years, we really just have to look at how how have things changed, are there other competitors? Are there better business practices that we have to update this contract? Cuz it is a ten year plus contract, if we just slept on it. You know, we built it so that we were we were required to look at it every three years. If we slept on it for ten years, things are gonna change a lot in ten years. So we wanted to, we wanted to do that and build that into it, but I digress. But I just didn't wanted to make it about economics alone, this is a great program and and the recycling rates are going through the roof. I don't wanna take steps back, wanna keep going forward. And I think if we raise rates um to where uh folks can find a reason not to do it, I don't wanna lose all of the ground that we've that we've made, but.
And and I respect and appreciate that too. One of the things you started talking about was ninety percent participation rate. For three years, we've done recycling, we've gotten to that rate. Sing the praises, tell us how much we've recycled in those three years. Tell us the successes, because I think the public is needing to hear that. And I think it's most recycling and trash is out of sight, out of mind. The benefit of this, and I think this is the largest contract the city may have if.
Yeah, as far as a dollar figure, probably. Um so we have over three thousand tons that we have taken on in recycling as of twenty twenty. Um and really, those numbers have just continued to grow. So like what, we had a total of twenty two hundred tons um the first year of implementation, twenty six hundred tons. So like we had a total of 2,200 tons the first year of implementation, 2,600 tons the second year of implementation. Now we're almost 3,200 tons. And, you know, our numbers are continuing to stay on trend, which is what, something that I really, I really like to see. You know, it's not like it's losing its traction. Sometimes things are new and shiny and okay, we'll pay attention to it now. It's, it's becoming a behavior that we're seeing trend line to normalcy. And that was the hope and the intent, you know? By building a better program, we change behaviors. So, you know, so far, so good, you know? We've got to keep looking at it.
And, and that's my last question then. In terms of educating the public, I see some of the sanitation workers, Papillion Sanitation trucks pull up. People have all three carts bunched close together so the arms can't go around and grip them. I see them putting some of the, their containers right next to mailboxes where the arm is. I see them put them, put them in areas that sometimes the driver just got to get out of the truck and, and move them. I see them put plastic bags in the recycling containers. I, I just, as I drive through the city, I see a real need to help further educate people on what they can recycle and how to locate things. So we make the job a little easier and better now that we have just a single person operating the truck.
When we originally started the program, our education was focused on just what is this, you know? And now I think we definitely are getting into kind of a maintenance management reminder, you know, like, hey, kids, clean the bed, hey, kids, clean, clean under your beds, that type of thing, where you just have to kind of continue to remind people. And the good thing about this contract is it shouldn't cost us any additional dollars and cents to do that education because we have built that into the contract. So those monies originally were just in program implementation education. Now, since we're in the kind of second phase of this contract, the education should definitely reflect exactly what you're talking about. Reminders about where to place your carts, reminders about what goes into the carts, continued education. We do, the first year or so, we, we thought, let's, let's make sure that we're tagging things correctly. That process has gotten a lot more streamlined so people understand what they're looking at because previously there wasn't any notifications back to the resident as to what was going on. I think that could be refined a little bit too. So there's definitely work to do. Good thing is, is that we, which shouldn't cost us any, a dime more because we've built those, those things into the contract. It's just a matter of what does it look like and let's get that going for this year. But good points.
So how, how are we going to do it?
I think it's working with our, our contractor today existing to review. So they supply me with every month a list of what are their tags, which means they're common issues that they're seeing at the curb. That's, you know, stopping them from either doing the job correctly or, you know, tagging something for misuse, that type of thing. So what we want to do is look for those trends. Now that we've gathered all the data, look for those trends and, and educate on the heavy-hitting things that are the most impactful to continue to, you know, be the best stewards to, to the guys that are on the trucks really. And to make sure that the recycling contamination rates remain low. I think when we start to see those things tick up, then we definitely need to, I know styrofoam is an issue, you know? That's something that probably needs to be educated and likely looking at other sites. So I, I think it's sitting with the contractor, looking at the data that we've collected over the last three years, trying to identify the trend lines and then focus and on our target education marketing there. So that would be the plan for that.
Okay. I look forward to seeing some of that. Thank you very much for answering all my questions, including one extra one at the end.
Okay, before we take any more questions, I've got a public meeting, a public hearing that's open. So if there's anybody else here that would like to speak regarding sixteen B, would you please come forward now? For or against? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to close the public hearing and we can go back to discussion. We've got a price by, a motion by Preister, a second by Burns to strike Article seventeen. Any more comments, questions, thoughts?
Unless somebody else does, I'll just closing. But I think everybody received an invitation to ribbon cutting that will be happening in conjunction with some grant money from Nebraska Environment and Energy and also some others. My concern is to prevent the use of the Orange Energy Bags and some of the hard-to-recycle plastics from ending up becoming either in the trash or being used for fuel. I, I think the important thing is that as we're being good stewards, we've developed a process and this dedication is going to be setting up another business or a side business right here in the metro area that I think will be another leader in demonstrating how all this scrap plastic can actually go to a product. And for those of you who may not know, microplastics are everywhere. They're in our water, our drinking water, they're in people's blood. It's been identified in babies' umbilical cord blood. Plastic is the biggest issue going. The more we can divert from landfills, the more we can divert and put it into, first keeping it out of the environment to begin with, but then putting it in a product that's easier to capture, the better in my view. So that's a big part of what I'm trying to do. And this new process has been in the works for years. I'm so pleased to see that it's going to have a dedication and it's actually going to be right here in Omaha. So if the material is going to be taken or not even collected, but what is collected is going to First Star anyway, then I'd just like to see it all go directly there in the first place and they have all of the recycling. The difference is, and I, I want to be clear, I, I am saying if we do support this, I think we need to also support a second amendment to the master fee schedule. And again, as Epiphany and I discussed, that would increase an additional 20 cents for, that would be added to my bill, I'm the lowest size cart, or 30 cents, which is the majority of the people in Bellevue. So 30 cents a month more people would pay. And what I think they get for that is better stewardship of the environment, the plastic getting additional care and scrutiny and reuse. I think it also reflects back to neighbors not having to deal with as much sound and traffic and other issues. And maybe not for others, but for me, I do feel like it, it is the golden rule and I don't want to push something on somebody else just because it's not me and I don't have to deal with it. So I think there is a moral component to it for me that, as Epiphany said, goes just beyond the financial portion of it. So for me, I'm willing to vote for this amendment and then I will, I, I share with you, make an amendment to the master fee schedule if this should get enough votes to pass.
Councilwoman Walsh?
So I have a question. In the motion to strike Article seventeen, if we vote yes, that says there is, Papillion Sanitation can only work with the one carrier. And if we vote no, then it stays that it, it has the two carriers as it's written, correct?
Correct. If you vote yes, it's just First Fiber. If you vote no, it's both of them.
Okay. And then before we go to vote, I've just, I've got to put my two cents on worth. As a private company, I'm all about cutting the competition, getting rid of the competition. But when I'm sitting up here, I, I find it fundamentally wrong for me to encourage cutting out the competition, if that makes any sense. We do have a contract with Papillion Sanitation and it's our job to make sure they're doing their job right and the way we want it done. And if there's a problem and they don't change it, then, you know, we go find another contractor. So anyway, that's, that's my thought on it. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Preister, a second by Burns to strike Article seventeen. So let's vote on that.
And Susan, on my screen, I've had a vote up for the last few minutes or 10 minutes, maybe.
Yeah, you can go ahead and vote, Don. It's spinning yet, but you can go.
Okay.
Okay, we've got four no votes and two yes votes. Uh, no votes are Councilman Stinson, Councilman Cook, Councilman McCaw, and Councilwoman Welch. So motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go back to the original motion on sixteen B. It was made by Stinson, seconded by Burns. And it is not amended. So do we have any further discussion on that? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you all. I appreciate the diligence in going out, looking at the sites, listening to all the information, making your own decisions. And we have differing opinions, but I respect all of yours. And I especially appreciate the time given because this is an important contract. As we said, it's the largest one the city has, it's a ten-year contract. And it's about something that nobody wants to talk about. People don't want to deal with, put it out at the curb and just get rid of it. But there are consequences and we want to minimize those to the environment. And so I, I thank everybody.
Okay. So with that, thanks for the education and let's vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? I just, I just want to add again, Epiphany, thanks for doing such a great job. You, you know, you're, you're very passionate about this. You, it shows in, in the emails that you send us, the correspondence, the information that you give us. And we're just very, very lucky to have you on our team. Your work is appreciated.
Thank you. Item sixteen B one, resolution number two zero two one dash two zero, approval to amend the master fee schedule to set the solid waste collection, recycling and yard waste fees for the solid waste contract and to add fees for street alley vacation. Need a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve sixteen B one as just read in the master fee schedule.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for professional engineering services for Cape Heart Road Improvements, 27th to 36th Street project in an amount not to exceed 91,556 dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Walsh. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize mayor to sign agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for professional services for shilling drive from Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street, bridge removal in an amount not to exceed 21,130 dollars. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen D as read.
Second.
Motion by Walsh, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Yes. I don't know if, if Mr. Clark or maybe Bree could answer this. A little bit of my concern is removing a bridge over railroad tracks. We've had a little bit of an issue when we were looking at over by Walmart, trying to go over some railroad tracks and conditions being put by the railroad. Does anybody foresee any issue down the road that if maybe property north of that would ever be developed and that would be an exit and people would go eastbound, that there would be any issues of rebuilding a bridge someday and not have issues or problems with the railroad?
I don't, I know taking it down, I don't have a problem with the railroad to rebuild it at this time since there's no development there. And I think that's a question we'll have to go back and ask the railroad. I, I don't anticipate that to be a problem.
Okay.
That's a good question. We'd have to veri- verify that.
And I, I don't know if, if Alfred Benish that's doing the work, if that's a question we could ask them if, if that would ever get developed in that road, a road or even a road maybe north of that bridge on the railroad tracks, just trying to connect maybe a development to go over the railroad tracks to get to Fort Crook. Maybe if they could address any type of issues of future roads, just at grade level going across the tracks versus, and including maybe rebuilding a bridge over the tracks.
Yeah. And as you go further north, I think you're going to find that the negotiation to put either a signal or a passage through that, that's, that's always going to be tough. The bridge question is a separate one, but I know as we're negotiating on 25th Street to solve that issue, it's kind of that old rule is they will abandon one if they can do two or vice versa. So to put another one into the north, another crossing, if we wanted to add to it, there is a crossing that isn't signalized.
Okay.
But we actually, we're the ones that dictate to them to signalize it. So if we decide to put a signal on the crossing, which is the 25th Street issue right now is it's not a signalized crossing, it's our responsibility to tell U.P. to put that signalized crossing in. So if we do something with one that's not signalized, it, that's on us. But as far as the bridge, I don't think, Mr. Cook, we'd have an issue with that, but it's, it's worth us making sure that we get an answer to that.
I, I guess I'm just, I don't think that bridge has been used. I think it's been closed for quite a while. And I don't know if I'd want to walk across it. I, I just think if, one thing, if we were replacing it or making renovations and fixing it versus a tear down and rebuild, just a question and maybe we can get it answered later. Thank you.
I don't think we want to give up our right to not build a bridge there in the future. So that's probably what we're looking for. Because there is some ground back there that's very developable.
I think we'd reserve that right. We just need to verify that they wouldn't clog that pipeline if we go to do that. So we'll get, we'll get an answer on that.
Any other questions, comments? Motion by Walsh, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Seventeen Administration Reports, those reports are given the first meeting of the month. So the next ones will be in your August third council packet. And eighteen takes us to closed session. Item, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we move the city council into closed session at this time for prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals involved in this matter. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session are confidential litigation updates. The following individuals will be included during all and some of the closed session. Mayor Rusty Hike, Mr. Jim Risto, Mark Albert, Bob Stenson, Paul Cook, Don Preister, Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch, Jerry McCaw, Bree Robbins, Annie Matthews, Susan Cluth, Jenny, Jenny Jennings, Darrell Coleman, Ken Clary, and Perry Guido.
Do we have a second? Any comments or questions? We've got a motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to go into closed session. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, it is now seven forty-nine and the council is now in closed session.